Bill number sixty-eight ninety-four, first reading and ordinance amending section four oh five point one three seven oh. Planned unit development districts to be read for the first time by title only.
Okay, I will open discussion. Any discussion from our group, any questions? We've gone over this quite a number of times, but still happy to entertain questions. None, none. Ira, you're good on this?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yes, no, I don't. Covered in the A R B meeting as well, so I'm very familiar with it.
Right.
Good, yeah.
And they were fine with it unanimously?
Unanimous vote of the A R B, yes.
Very good. And there are no hands up, right? Okay, all right. Then I will close the public hearing. Now, Ira, this is where you take over for Rich.
Well, okay, I introduce bill number sixty-eight ninety-four, an amendment to section four oh five point one three seven oh. Planned unit development districts to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Second, okay, great. Any other discussion right now? Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine four, first reading and ordinance amending section four oh five point one three seven zero. The municipal code of the city of Clayton, Missouri regarding general requirements for planned unit developments.
All right, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I move that, ready?
Alderman, Alderman Berkowitz, I was teasing, go ahead.
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty-eight ninety-four on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the minutes reflect, the board has given unanimous consent. Alderman Berkowitz.
Oh, you cut out, I couldn't hear you. I introduce bill number sixty-eight ninety-four, an amendment to section four oh five point one three seven oh. Planned unit development districts to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Second, okay, great. Any other discussion right now? Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine four, first reading and ordinance amending section four oh five point one three seven zero. The municipal code of the city of Clayton, Missouri regarding general requirements for planned unit developments.
All right, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I move, ready?
Alderman, Alderman Berkowitz, I was teasing, go ahead.
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty-eight ninety-four on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the minutes reflect, the board has given unanimous consent. Alderman Berkowitz.
Oh, you cut out, I couldn't hear you. I introduce bill number sixty-eight ninety-four, an amendment to section four oh five point one three seven oh. Planned unit development district to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Right. Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine four, second reading and consideration for adoption. A note.
Oh, I thought the red men was on.
That's okay.
My apologies. Bill number sixty-eight nine four, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance amending section four oh five dot one three seven zero. Of the municipal code of the city of Clayton, Missouri regarding general requirements for planned unit developments.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderman Patel. I'm sorry. Buas.
Aye.
Alderman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye. Okay, next is the amendment to relating to public benefits. Mr. City Manager.
This is a public hearing to solicit input regarding a proposed amendment to chapter four oh five zoning regulations. Article nine, special development district, related to the inclusion of an additional public benefit. Both the planned unit development district for P U D and special development district S D D regulations have requirements for the provision of public benefits. In exchange for flexibility from traditional zoning restrictions. The current P U D regulations pertaining to public benefits consist of a point system with clearly defined public benefits and values for each enhancement. Whereas the S D D regulations do not consist of a point system, but instead list general acceptable public benefits. When the P U D regulations were revised in twenty nineteen to allow for the current point based system. It included a point category for the enhancement of off-site city-owned parks or public facilities. And the installation of streetscape meeting city standards. The S D D public benefits section does not, does not make any specific reference to these types of enhancements or facilities. Board of Alderman discussed this discrepancy in January of twenty twenty-two. And proposed legislation to add the following language to the list of S D D public benefits. And it reads as follows, enhancements to off-site city-owned parks or other public facilities. Such as the replacement of recreation-related facilities or the installation of streetscape meeting city standards where none currently exists. The Plan Commission considered this request at the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Plan Commission meeting had voted to recommend approval to the Board of Alderman. Staff recommends that the Board of Alderman hold a public hearing and approve the ordinance.
Thank you. And I will just say that I have opened a public hearing and requested proof of publication as well. Any discussion?
I have one thing, I, I support the amendment that's proposed and just, I think there might have been a word or something missed. On, in set A seven of the, of this section four oh five, on page fourteen of our agenda. Seven reads provisions for reduced sale or rental for percentage of the residential units to encourage the goal of affordable housing. Perhaps it was intended to mean provisions for reduced sale price or rents for a percentage of the residential units.
And that's something we had added prior, so provisions for reduced sale price or rental.
Or rent.
Or rent.
So.
Clean up motion, that can be added.
Yes.
If we like, want to take that up after the bill is introduced on first.
Okay, very good. You can make a motion then. Okay, very good. All right. All right, any other comments? Okay, I will close the public hearing.
I would like to, oh. I introduce bill number sixty-eight ninety-five, an amendment to section four oh five point eleven nine oh. Relating to public benefits and special development districts to be read for the first time by title only.
Alderman Fader, do you have something before?
I just wanted to make a comment, I don't think it's for discussion tonight, but reading through this, and I have no objection to what we're doing here. It does raise in my own mind the idea that we have a point system for the P U D and we don't have a point system for the S S D. And it seems to me at this point that's sort of an anomaly, we should have one or the other, so. But that's, that's a topic I'm sure for another day, but as long as we're discussing it, I wanted to mention it.
Yeah, okay, great, we, we can kind of put that on our list to look at later.
Yes, and that's something that was discussed at the Plan Commission as well, at, at the meeting where S D D was discussed. And when the commission had talked about it, I think we're all in a place where, to this point in time, we've only had two projects come in under the P U D. Point system, a foresight point, and then beamest in place. And so, the Plan Commission's viewpoint on it was, it's still relatively new, we're still working out kinks and making sure it works properly. We have three projects that have gone through community conferences that we expect formal applications on shortly. So let's see how those three go through the process, and if we need to make any other adjustments to the P U D system, then that would be the time. And then, if it is working well, the way it's designed, then consider perhaps moving the S D D to a point system as well. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so we've had the motion, the bill introduced, and we need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine five, second reading and, ah, first reading.
But, but wait, do you want to do her motion next, or after you read it?
Introduce the bill and then amend it.
You just tell me what.
All right. Bill number sixty-eight nine five, first reading and ordinance amending section four oh five dot one one nine zero of the municipal code of the city of Clayton, Missouri. Relating to public benefits in special development districts. And I believe there's a proposed amendment to amend subsection seven of section four oh five dot one one nine zero. To read provisions for reduced sale price or rent for a percentage of the residential units, et cetera.
That's a motion, and do we need a second for that?
So moved.
So moved. Second, thank you. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then, then can we move on to the next thing, or do we need to? Okay, all right. Go ahead, Alderman Berkowitz.
Okay, I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration of adoption of bill number sixty-eight nine five. As amended by motion to subsection seven on the day of its introduction.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number.
Oh, well, okay, we just said the. Okay, sorry, I skipped ahead, guys, very sorry. All those in favor of the unanimous consent?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the minutes reflect, the board has given unanimous consent. Now, Alderman Berkowitz, sorry.
I introduce bill number sixty, sixty-eight oh five, as amended by motion. As to subsection seven. Amendment to section four oh five point zero, point one one nine zero relating to public benefits to special development districts to be read for the second time by title only.
Any discuss, oh, second, go ahead.
Second, I would just say, bill number sixty-eight nine five.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you said sixty-eight oh five, but it's nine five. And, okay, I think we're.
Six eight nine five, I stand corrected.
That's okay. Any further discussion? All right, now, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine five, second reading and consideration for adoption as amended. An ordinance amending section four oh five dot one one nine zero. Of the municipal code of the city of Clayton, Missouri relating to public benefits in special development districts.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderman Buas.
Aye.
Alderman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Harris. Thank you. I look different, don't I? Okay, um, all right, next we have the City Manager's report.
On March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, the city of Clayton created the seven seven, seventy-seven thirty Bonham Community Improvement District, or C I D. For the property located at seventy-seven thirty Bonham Avenue, now operating as the Lumeridian Hotel. C I D imposes an additional one percent sales tax on the hotel. The C I D uses the revenues from the sales tax to reimburse the developer for certain eligible redevelopment costs. The C I D is governed by a five-member board of directors appointed by the mayor with consent of the Board of Alderman. Only registered voters residing within the C I D and authorized representatives of other property owners within the C I D may be appointed to the Board of Directors. In this case, the developer is the sole property owner within the C I D. The C I D is requesting that Jennifer Metz, Taylor Umshide, and Andrew Hargus be reappointed for four-year terms to expire March fourteenth, twenty twenty-six. Staff recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the appointments and the attached ordinance.
Okay, thank you, I'll open the discussion. Any questions or comments here? And no hands are up, I assume? So, Alderman Berkowitz.
Introduce bill number sixty-eight ninety-six to approve the appointment of the Board of Directors of the seventy-seven thirty Bonham Community Improvement District. To read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine six, first reading and ordinance of the city of Clayton, Missouri. Approving the reappointment of certain Board of Directors for the seventy-seven thirty Bonham Community Improvement District.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alderman Berkowitz.
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty-eight ninety-six on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let the minutes reflect, the board has given unanimous consent.
I introduce bill number sixty-eight ninety-six to approve the appointment of the Board of Directors of the seventy-seven thirty Bonham Community Improvement District. To be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine six, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance of the city of Clayton, Missouri approving the reappointment of certain Board of Directors for the seventy-seven thirty Bonham Community Improvement District.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderman Buas.
Aye.
Alderman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Hi. Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Hey, the Public Works Department is requesting approval of a construction contract for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two asphalt rejuvenation project with corrective asphalt materials LLC. This project includes the application of malteene-based asphalt rejuvenator on the roads in Hillcrest, Wydown Forest, and Morelands neighborhoods. As well as the Maryland Avenue, as well as Maryland Avenue and Brentwood Boulevard. Work is expected to take place over two to three weeks in the late spring or early summer of twenty twenty-two. Bids were open on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and the city received one bid. Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC submitted the lowest responsive responsible base bid in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. While only one bid was received, staff did check with some surrounding municipalities, as well as compared it against our unit cost from twenty seventeen. Other municipalities have also received single bidders for similar work, and the bid was found to be comparable to those cities. Public Works also solicited alternate bid A, which includes the privately maintained portions of Aberdeen and Arundel and Hillcrest neighborhood. As the purpose of this ad alternate is to establish unit cost for a separate contract with the Hillcrest Neighborhood Association. Public Works will be rejecting this ad alternate bid for the city's portion, or the city's contract. The total recommended award amount is for, the base bid is one hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This is approximately three thousand dollars above the projected cost. However, the capital improvement fund has adequate funds for this activity in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Staff recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the ordinance authorizing a contract with Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC. Amount of one hundred seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-two asphalt rejuvenation project. If anyone has any questions about the project or the contract, Mr. Matt Malik, our Director of Public Works, is here this evening.
Hey, Matt, um, do you all have any questions up here? None, I have a couple. I just thought, since you wore your tie, I should ask you something. Looking good. We've, have we done this process before?
We have, in two thousand seventeen was our first application of it.
And that, and that held up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, they were making sure our microphone was on.
I understand.
Yes, it's performed well, it's a product we put at the top of the degradation curve of pavement. It tightens up the asphalt and prevents future cracks, and we're hopeful that with continued application of this as part of our toolbox of pavement management tools. We can extend the life of pavements and have cost reduction over the lifecycle.
Is this just like a sealant or something that we put on, you know, can you see it? Is it black, is it, is it like clear, or how does it go on?
It actually goes down in kind of a pinkish color, as it dries within about ten minutes, it becomes clear. It'll be tacky, they put asphalt screenings, or I'm sorry, limestone screenings down for traction for the day, and they'll come back and sweep them up the next day. But it's clear and basically not noticeable.
Okay, all right, great, any other, no other questions? All right. You got off easy that time. All right, um, all right, Alderman Berkowitz.
I'd like to introduce bill number sixty-nine, sixty-eight ninety-seven to approve a contract with Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC. For the asphalt rejuvenation project to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine seven, first reading. An ordinance approving a contract with Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two asphalt rejuvenation project.
All those, excuse me, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Alderman Berkowitz.
I move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number sixty-eight ninety-seven on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the minutes reflect, the board has given unanimous consent.
I introduce bill number sixty-eight ninety-seven to approve a contract with Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC. For the asphalt rejuvenation project to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-eight nine seven, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a contract with Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two asphalt rejuvenation project.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderman Buas.
Aye.
Alderman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Okay, I think that concludes our business. If we'd like to have our go-around, we can, we can start with Alderman Berkowitz, and want to tell us about your, the last couple of weeks for you.
Well, we had an A R B meeting, and there was absolutely really nothing to report of any significance, so I'm going to pass.
Okay, very good.
I have, Susan and I had a Parks and Rec meeting last week, and we discussed the master planning process and delaying it a year. We also talked about the ice rink. And how the demolition is going to be delayed for some time till after the swim season. But overall, it was a great meeting, and the commission was supportive of the fact that we are deciding to just delay the project for a year.
Okay, very good. Alderman Buas.
I'll just piggyback on that a little bit, it was, it was a, it was a good meeting, and there was support, and I think there is, as concerns expressed as well. Or just I hope that there'd be good communication going forward, so everyone in the committee knows what's going on with the parks because of the support for the development of that, of the ice rink and everything else. And if we keep people abreast as it happens, it might be to our benefit, so I think that's in the works anyway, but the commission did talk about that. We also had an Equity Commission meeting. And probably the, there's a lot of, there's some business things going on there, you know, change of leadership and heading up like that. And we also had our county representative show up and talk about, he acknowledged that he received a letter from this board and from the commission asking for amendment or removal of the county sign that's in the middle of downtown Clayton. And that it has been seen by the right eyes, but they have a whole, you know, queue of, of things like that that they're addressing, and his best guess was that it would be addressed sometime in August, about timeframe, something like that.
That's sooner than I was thinking, that's good.
Oh, we'll see.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and he also shared with us some of the things the county's doing, and what we might want to implement or work with the county in taking steps to achieve the whole welcoming community idea. So hopefully there'll be more partnership going on with that as well.
Well, keep us informed about what those things are.
We'll see, yep.
Okay, very good. Alderman Patel, anything from you?
Thanks, yeah, I've had a fun couple of weeks, I feel like there's been a lot going on. I got invited to the Sonia Sotomayor events, some of what Wash U had there, and she talked a lot about the importance and like value in public service, which was especially meaningful. And it was a great opportunity to meet other like local leaders who I, some who I had not met before. So, thanks always to Wash U for, you know, including us in some of their events and being such an exciting member of our community, that was really awesome. And then, earlier this week, I saw a project that was done in St. Louis City. It was on Hamilton north of Delmar, and it was asphalt art. So, a local group was painting on the streets, and they were doing it in a way that looked like traffic calming to me. And so, I asked the organization about it, I got in touch with, it was St. Louis Artworks, which was a new organization for me to learn about. And, but they've been around for more than a handful of years, I think. And so, they had. And so they had been commissioned by this neighborhood and got a grant from Bloomberg, um, to at least partly fund this project to paint the streets in a way that encourages traffic calming, and I thought it was particularly cool, given some of our efforts and some of the interest in our community around traffic calming. And, um, and the fact that painting on the street is not obtrusive, right, from a, in terms of like infrastructure, and, you know, you could still theoretically park on top of it and things like that, so I thought it could be something really interesting for us to explore as an option to, um, offer to neighborhoods that take us up on that process for, um, traffic calming, so, um, also it's just a really cool organization, they actually bring in teens from, um, the city and the county to, like, work for them and actually get stipends, they treat it more like employment than an educational program. Um, and they can be commissioned to do any kind of art project, like, for example, um, painting utility boxes or other things that you might have that would want to be beautified, so I think it could be something really interesting for us to, to consider, an organization for us to consider partnering with or working with in the future, so.
Great, that's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Alderman Fader, anything?
Alderwoman, uh, McAndrew and I went to the Barclay House, and we had about twenty-five residents there who asked us a lot of questions for about forty-five minutes, maybe an hour, so not just about the ice rink, although they were very interested in that. Patty DeForest, Tony Searing, Alex Elmstead from CCF, and I met with Bob Chapman uh, to talk about what I guess is a, has been an issue with the corner of Chapman Plaza, uh, because the, uh, the impact of winter weather is such that you really have to turn the fountain off, uh, right before Thanksgiving, and can't put it back until April, and I think various efforts to try to do something at the corner have gotten sort of mixed reactions, and so, uh, as a CCF project, uh, there's an effort underway to design or have designed a sculpture piece that would essentially fit onto the sculpture, eh, onto the, onto the, uh, the fountain there for that period, could be fairly easily, uh, installed and taken down, um, and so we wanted to make sure that Bob Chapman, uh, was okay with that, since uh, he's been the major contributor, and, uh, he was very happy with it, we're continuing to work on it with CCF, and, uh, of course, the good news, I think it'll be a permanent installation for those four or five months, and at no cost to the taxpayer, since it's all part of the original Chapman, uh, uh, foundation gift. Uh, and finally, I just, uh, aside from enjoying our event on opening day, uh, it so happened, as the board members know, we all received a gift package from the Kol Nidra, called Rena Congregation, uh, which is the first really Jewish synagogue in, in Clayton, maybe ever, and, uh, and when we got the basket, I sent a note to the executive director thanking her and, and mentioning that since I had worked on the project for many years as a lawyer, uh, that I'd never had a tour since it was opened, and she, she very kindly invited me over there. And it's a great facility, but I think the point that struck me was, part of the facility is the Monica Nidorf Early Childhood Center, uh, which was named in her honor, and she's unfortunately deceased, and so it really smut, struck me the irony that when I got home, literally five minutes afterwards, I saw that Michael Nidorf had passed away, so it was a touching mon, uh, moment, and as we say in the Jewish faith, uh, may his, uh, may his memory be for a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do not have anything in particular, I just echo Becky's comments on the Washington University event uh, with, uh, Justice Sotomayor, um, it was, it was really, really great to be there, and, uh, she did such a great job of interacting with all the many students, there are probably, I'm, I'm not good at guessing, five hundred at least, maybe a thousand students in the auditorium, and plus a few of us others. It, it was, it was great to, uh, hear what she had to say, she's quite a character. I will say there was a little reception afterwards, and, um, there were quite a few dignitaries there, but everybody was very, very positive about Clayton, couldn't say enough good things about it. Uh, the justice herself couldn't say enough good things because she'd been toured through Clayton, and everything been pointed out to her in Clayton, and so, um, she complimented us and said we had a great city, and we're doing a great job, so, um, just sharing that with you. Um, okay, anything else from you, Mr. City Manager?
I would just mention that the Friday strategy session for April that was scheduled for this Friday, April fifteenth, uh, has been canceled, so anybody watching that was planning on watching that, it has been canceled.
Okay, very good. Okay, I think with that, we're ready to adjourn into a closed session, and, uh, Alderman Fader, could you do us the honor?
Yes, uh, I'd like to move that we hold a closed session, uh, with a closed vote in record for one or more of the reasons as authorized by section six-ten, section, uh, subsection oh-two-one, subsection one, two, and three of the revised statutes of Missouri relating to legal issues, real estate and/or personnel, negotiation of a contract pursuant to section six-ten point oh-two-one subsection twelve, revised statutes of Missouri proprietary information pursuant to section six-ten point oh-two-one subsection fifteen, and/or information related to public safety and security measures pursuant to section six-ten point oh-two-one subsections eighteen and nineteen of the revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Fader, if I may, I, I admire your comprehensiveness, but could I ask you to include subsection six-ten point oh-two-one-nine concerning negotiations with employee groups?
Would be a fine addition, Mr. Keefe.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion.
Thank you. Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned into closed session. I'm turning off my mic.